Good evening and welcome to the North Rose Wilket North Rose Wilket School District Board of Education. I'm Mr. Callier, President of the Board. And to begin tonight, would you please stand for the seat?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our mother, which stands on the nation's power in this world, where we do not have a son.
First of all, I will entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Linda Antina, discussion, all in paper. Motion is clear. Tonight we have some presentations, and I'll ask Mr. Poland to please introduce those.
Thank you, Mrs. Callier. So I'm going to start by having Quinn and Tate Wickham come up to the podium, and I'm going to actually ask that Principal Grace to introduce them. Come on up there, Tate. We've been waiting all night to see this. So these two are fantastic representation of our student body at North Rose Wilket Elementary, and they have a little presentation of what's been happening down at the elementary school that they're going to share with us. So, Mrs. Grace, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us join you tonight. So I have two presenters with us.
You don't want to run it.
So I have Tita Wickham. He is a P.K. here. This is Copeland to class, and he has some questions that we've prepared, and hopefully he will tell you the things that he loves about school. And then his... It is in fourth.
What can you do, Billy?
Tate, come on over in front so we can actually see you, bud. There, come over here so we can see you. That's perfect. That's what I wanted.
That is what they want. So Quinn is a fourth grader at our school, and so they are obviously brother and sister, and so they're going to share a little bit about what they love about school. Quinn, are you ready or do you want Quinn to go first? Do you want to go first, or do you want Copeland to go first? Quinn, okay.
Hello, my name is Quinn Wickham. I am a fourth grader at North Rose Wilket Elementary. I have been a student here since I was a kid, and I am a student council representative.
Can I say that again so you can get right into the mic, okay?
Okay. Hello, my name is Quinn Wickham, and I am a fourth grader at North Rose Wilket Elementary. I have been a student here since I was a kid, and I am a student council representative. My favorite part about school is that. I really like that because it is challenging, and I like to be challenged. I'm really good at multiplication, and I can skip count by fours. This year in reading, I have been learning different ways to help on more difficult. I like to read fiction books and books about TV shows. I have loved all my teachers at NRW because they all taught me how to create a good student. I really like Miss Mark because she always had activities for us to do after we reached our level four. I think our school is the best because there are so many family, friends, teachers, a junior principal, and assistant principal, and all the equipment is so helpful. I also like looking in like places where they maybe want to do everything they can for our students. This year I joined the student council because I wanted to make myself and others more respectful and responsible. I also want to have a voice and to help others stand up for themselves. Student council allows us to learn more about standing up and having the confidence to do it.
What's your favorite part about school? What's your favorite part about school? Who's your favorite teacher? Who's your favorite teacher? Who's your teacher, Mrs. Satch? Let me say Mrs. Satch. What do you like best about school? Both say that. They want to hear that part. A piece of the playground. All right, thank you very much for joining us. Any questions?
It's wonderful having you both here, brother and sister. And we're glad that you're having a good year. And I have pretty playground. It's probably one of the best things going. And Quinn, I'm glad everything is going well with you. I'm not surprised. Anyone else want to say anything?
It's the clicker. The clicker's on.
So I just want to thank both of you for coming and presenting to us tonight. And if, you know, Tate was a little off, it might be because the superintendent was over there entertaining him a little bit before the meeting started. And we heard about the book that Ms. Copeland just read to them, The Little T-Rex. So I think he's doing a great job of impersonating the little T-Rex tonight. And we're thrilled with their enthusiasm for learning, and I think he's going to help leave a light power with presentation later. So really appreciative of you and your family, and thank you both for being with us tonight. Thank you. So it's great to have student participation, especially since our board meetings are back in person. So really appreciate that. I'm going to ask Mrs. Ruff and your team to come on up. I think we had a roll back, I believe. Get yourselves situated, and we're going to go right into the middle school improvement plan.
Okay. We good? Okay. Good evening. My name is Crystal Rell, and I am the principal at NRW Middle School. Tonight, our school leadership team will be presenting to you our school improvement plan. At this time, I would like to introduce our team. Scott Castle, Assistant Principal. Casey Dill, School Leader, Instructional Coach. Sarah Bogart, School Psychologist. Tony Tubalino, Social Studies Teacher. And Jill Ritchie, Special Education Teacher. The purpose of this plan is to share with you how we are committed to the mission and vision within our district. Where have we been? For our local proficiency assessment, we utilize ELA and math games web. We test our students in the fall, winter, and spring. Last year, we saw means as the year progressed from fall to spring. We hope to see even further growth this year. As for our ELA and math New York State assessments, last year, the majority of our students were at Level 1 and 2. Clearly, this is not where we want to stay, and our efforts will be concentrated on making gains in these areas. One way we are doing this is with students taking ownership by goal setting across all grade levels.
Evening. The one for one for us as a partnership. With our annual goal, we will ensure communication is at the forefront of our practice among all stakeholders within the NRW family, and build meaningful relationships, foster connections, and create a sense of belonging. Our action step highlights include the following. First off, our monthly parent and family newsletter. NRW Middle School communicates events, important information, and updates to all families through an electronic newsletter that will be sent out at the beginning of each month. Our reflect and recover initiative. Staff will meet as a team once a month specifically focused on team building and communicate with students and family to recognize improvement and growth. Our crew repair room communication. Administrators, teachers, and staff will effectively communicate student needs with one another as well as parents and families. And lastly, our academic progress communication. Interim progress reports will be mailed home to families for the follow-up plan to support student success. Parent-teacher conferences are also offered to support student strengths, areas of growth, and goal setting among students and family. A goal two is equity. Our annual goal is to create a welcoming and affirming environment where students feel valued, safe, respected, and welcome. This includes Tier One interventions. Teachers will implement Tier One behavior and academic interventions within their classroom environment. Consistent meetings to develop and implement interventions will be held by weekly. Our cougar care room is a place to triage student needs. Students will reflect, recover, repair, and return to class. Proactive action plans will be created, and a restorative way of thinking will be utilized. Our restorative approaches incorporate a restorative way of thinking that will be taught and implemented as a way to restore relationships and meet the needs of our students. Questioning techniques and peace circles will help to strengthen the school culture and relationships.
Our third goal is our social emotional goal, where we are aiming to develop and implement whole school and targeted social emotional supports for students and staff that are both responsive and receptive to individual needs. At the Tier One level, we have advisory, which is built into our schedule every morning. Advisory is a time to ensure students start their day with a positive mindset. Our cougar pride team creates daily slides for each advisory that have topics or questions to guide conversations and build relationships between peers and adults during that time. At the Tier Two level, our student support team is available each day to students as they utilize CCR. We also have proactive strategies built in such as runaround sheets, lunch groups, as well as help with services. And then lastly, we're doing using the For You Friday, which is a whole district initiative which focuses on the self-care staff. Generally, it's the last Friday of each month, but we are using this to help reunderwrite staff and help build relationships between our colleagues. Goal four is around academics. So ninety percent of our students will achieve proficiency in math and reading on games web. In addition, thirty percent of those proficient will achieve mastery. To meet those goals, we have win or what I mean time. Students in grades five and six receive win time three out of a four-day cycle to focus on their reading or math skills. This will be revisited each marking period to meet the needs of our students' individual academic needs. Groups of students in grades seven and eight will receive win time focusing on reading skills that are differentiated to their needs. ELA skills class will be implemented for specific students in grades seven and eight to strengthen their reading and writing skills. We also have our MTFS systems and processes in place. So Tier One school-wide interventions will be implemented based on data analysis trends and needs of school as a whole. Next-level intervention plans will be implemented through MTFS to meet individual needs of students, focusing on educating the whole child. Our fifth goal is finance. Our annual goals are building leaders who will work directly with department chairs to ensure that resources allocated align with the core beliefs and goals of the district's strategic plan. Our other goal is purchasing materials and supplies when we monitor proficiency and conservation of resources. To help achieve these goals, we will review our budget process. Sorry. There is a review of the budget to our process in coordination of purchases to directly support current initiatives. Next, there's team communication, where administration works together under instructional coach and grade levels to ensure resources allocated align with district building initiatives. Next, supervision of club expenses, where the youth assistant principal guides and oversees club procedures, recordings, and expenses. And lastly, purchase orders are renewed and approved by the principal to ensure they support the use of our students, staff, and school initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. So are there any questions for the middle school team?
It sounds like you're having a good year. It sounds like you're focused and really working the academic, emotional, social levels of our middle school kids. So thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Is it possible?
Is it possible that we could get a copy of the monthly newsletter or the family and parent digital copy?
So that goes out to Sir Five. It's a combination of all three schools and our new parents' firm, which can be turned over to the other as well.
Do you have the email address of the parents' firm? We'll get you that.
Thank you. And I also would like, I've heard about a restorative approach. It's not something I'm familiar with. Is it possible to have some kind of a short presentation on that? Not enough. And what do you do, I forgot what you call it early, in the early in the morning advisory? What is the, how do you do the themes of that?
So we really try to focus on advisory first and foremost in the morning. We're trying to get started on the day. And obviously, at our present, all of them come in, have a hundred million of their classes. And what we're also doing, trying to reduce that with some, I started out there, explaining to them about, I do have their questions. We're doing some community skills, offering community circles. We're also using that kind of factor in our support to make sure that students are also getting the funding in terms of, say, math, math science, collaborating with their teachers, reaching out, and maybe getting some of that. It's a good time to be depressed, to be tired, relax. It's also a time to be less worried about support.
Our cougar pride team, who may have a teachers, built slides that are tied to the cougar values. So every month, they have different data that they co-sign. And they create the slides, send out to all the teachers, and those slides are put up. So every kid at the school is getting the same slide, and it'll just be maybe just a sort of reflective question, or some just different thinking, settling in, any sort of things to give them.
We also have a few kids to be, like, the more social emotional support. So we have to have kids that, some of our track, and they also need to have a little bit extra support during that time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Mrs. Callier, before we move on to the next presentation, I just want to jump off of the agenda real quick and let the board and the community know. We missed the Board of Education Appreciation Week in October because we only had one board meeting in the month of October. But on behalf of the administration, the staff, and students of North Rose Wilket, we want to say thank you to the Board of Education members. At your seat tonight, there was a garment that was placed there that we provided to you for the countless hours of your efforts that you've given to our community, our school district, and most importantly, our students. So thank you all for everything you do on behalf of the students of North Rose Wilket. So we want to pull off the record and give you that now officially on the record.
Well, thank you, Mr. Poland. We certainly do appreciate that, don't we? It's, being on the school board is always a challenge, and it's also just a wonderful opportunity to have some positive impact on the education of our kids and the future of our community, because these kids are the future. So we appreciate this, and we also appreciate being together and working together on the board.
I always look at.
Great, thank you. So Gary's going to join me in a minute, but we're going to just go through a couple of quick things. You saw this just a moment ago from our middle school. Just a reference to our vision and our mission, excuse me, our mission and our vision. You know, the things that drives what we do and why we're here. So tonight, we just want to go through a quick little presentation of our budget calendar because honestly, everything we need to do, we need to keep this in mind. This is a quick essential question. How do we allocate our resources in order to maintain programs and public support while improving the results in a fiscally responsible manner? You know, you've seen that fiscal goal in each of this school improvement plan over the last two years, and that's something that we're going to continue to implement. We want to make sure that when the taxpayers entrust us with their resources, that we're spending it appropriately, and we're placing the emphasis where the community feels that the money should be best allocated. So this is a driver for us, and tonight we're going to go through a little bit about how we're going to frame our thinking for our upcoming budget season. So last year, you know, we talked about these thirteen budget factors, everything that we consider when we're developing the school budget. That's not going to change because we think the consistency is important. However, a couple of points of emphasis that we're really going to key in on tonight just as here you're thinking as we go through the budget are these areas that I've holded out here tonight. The economic climate. Anybody who has a TV, a newspaper, or a pulse for that matter, knows fiscally, we're in some very challenging times right now as a society. That ever-changing economy with inflation above eight percent and really no slowdown in sight. We're heading into a very challenging period of time because we know already utilities are slated to go up at least fifty percent. So we want to focus on the economic climate, and that's going to be an area that our administration is going to keep in mind when we talk about things. The tax levy limit, I'm going to let Gary speak to that a little bit because with our limited revenue stream, it's really going to impact how much we can go out budget-to-budget. Envolvement, as many of you know, involvement's declining significantly, not just here at North Rose Wilket, but across New York State. And that's always going to factor into our viability of our community schools and what we're doing right now. Thankfully, we're in three schools now, but at some point, we may need to have a conversation about what's best for the community in terms of viability and sustainability, and whether we need to go down, whether we need to continue to share resources with other districts, things of that nature. Staffing has been presenting some significant challenges, not just here, but again, across the state. You have a shortage of certified people. You have a shortage of people who are going into the field, and you have people that are able to command a salary unlike before. So you have people that are gaining experience one place and using that experience to leverage it for quite substantial raises in other areas schools. And right now, with the economic climate, you can't fault somebody who's doing best for their family. Maintenance is obviously an ongoing challenge when we have facilities that need attention and time. And then ultimately, number thirteen, making sure that when we budget these things, we're going through this process and with the lens that we're doing what's best for the taxpayer. So obviously, in addition to inflation, the supply chain interruption have impacted how we do business right now. You know, things that used to be, you know, at the back of the call are now taking thirty days, sixty days, and in some cases, six months. That's certainly going to play a part in what we do. That tax levy limit, I'm going to let Gary speak to briefly before I jump back in and go into some more detail about those other areas I just mentioned.
Mr. Poland? So our revenues, our budget is really tied to our ability to bring in revenues. And our revenue is really limited. About one-third of our revenue comes from our tax levy, and about two-thirds of our revenue comes from state aid. So about twelve years ago, tax levy limit came into play, and it really does have an impact. Prior to the tax levy limit, boards could, in times of inflation, which we're experiencing now, increase property taxes to, you know, although property owners had to approve our budget, get the feeling that the community was willing to pay to support the schools. We don't have that choice anymore. So we are tied to roughly a two percent tax limit for the last twelve years now. And it really does limit our ability to making programs win, as Mr. Poland said, we're facing inflationary factor. CPI index is currently over eight percent. So this levy limit says that we can raise the total taxes by roughly two percent for the lower, the lower two percent for the CPI. So when CPI goes way above the two percent level, we really have our hands tied, and we have a greater challenge on our hands because of that. And just to say, we have a thirty-three million dollar budget. A two percent tax limit, increasing the taxes by two percent is only about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. It's not a lot.
So Gary, I'll jump back in momentarily, but as we mentioned, you know, if you look at our enrollment, the numbers look fairly healthy. We've been consistent from what I reported at the beginning of the year. There's a breakdown by building, and you see the North Rose Wilket Elementary, four-hundred-and-twenty-two students. That was not uncommon for any of the buildings years ago. But I think according to what Mr. Sloan has calculated, we're down about a thousand students overall in the last, how many years?
Twenty.
The last twenty years, so we're down about a thousand students. So obviously, some of our state aid is generated based on, you know, student number, and allocations are tied to specific numbers of students at each level. That'll be a factor. Currently, here are the positions that we have open across the district. You know, so as I mentioned a minute ago, with those economic challenges and people being able to move about and command a different salary based on what's best for them and their family, these are current positions that are open. Thank you to the administrators for being very creative with how they fill these roles and these vacancies. They've done it in a variety of different ways, whether it's been through long-term stuff, whether it's through consultants, whether it's administrators taking on the role of driving the bus. And in many cases, it's not uncommon to see our building administrators or directors filling into one of these critical areas of need. So currently, those are the positions. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't say, many of these open positions here at North Rose Wilket exist in an open capacity in some of our neighboring school districts. For one, I know Spanish, it seemed like at the beginning of the year, just about every district in the county had a Spanish opening. So finding qualified, certified Spanish teachers is like finding a needle in a haystack, and that's the same thing with family and consumer sciences. But thankfully, we have some great substitute teachers filling in and serving our students daily. Here's just a couple of... Here's just a couple above, you see about thirteen guys from Elmer Davis Roofing, um, which was part of our capital project for the winter of twenty-twenty-one, December. Our residents, um, passed the resolution and we started into a project. So that moved that they're on right there, it's thirty years old, and it was in dire straits. I'm pleased to say, based on their diligence and their efficiency, um, that they finished that roof at the high school, and they did something that was pretty remarkable, and the weather cooperated. So, the only thing that they have left to do there is to, you know, add the flashing around the exterior. But we're months ahead of where they thought they would be, um, when we got state head approval. Um, that's just an example of some of the maintenance costs. Some of the ways we're realizing efficiencies, you may recognize that shower at the bottom, um, that's formerly our soccer dugout, and that's something that our maintenance crew started to disassemble internally as part of our upcoming project that will be replaced. But we're realizing the savings by having our maintenance crew take it down. And again, typically, we'd be plowing snow potentially this time of year, but thankfully, due to the weather, we had heavy frost, so grass isn't growing. We're able to get out there and demo that dugout and the other one um, and save our taxpayers a little bit of money so we can utilize resources later on in the project. Um, this is the piece that, you know, Gary's gonna get into a little bit more in the five-year financial outlook. You'll recall you received an update on our fiscal health, our reserves, um, last June. And when he gets into it, he's gonna go through three scenarios about the five-year projection. And again, we're using worst-case scenario with some of those projections, um, just so that you guys are prepared for, um, what we, we do on a regular basis. Um, but if you look in the column outside to the right, we're going out as far as twenty-five, twenty-six, just trying to project how we utilize our reserves to offset the costs of the taxpayer. This is a general overview of the calendar that you have in your packet tonight. Um, just wanna kind of go through and set the stage, because last year, we did this and went through those, um, economic budget factors. And then we really started to pick up our pace when it came down to January. Where each board meeting we had, whether it was a business meeting or a workshop meeting, um, you're getting practically informed of what our budget practices are looking like, what our dollar amount outlook looks like, um, and trying to be inclusive of the Board of Education and the community every step along the way. So, are there questions with respect to the budget calendar? If not, I'm gonna turn it over to Gary and let him go through a brief overview of the five-year budget outlook. Okay, Gary?
Okay, well, uh, thank you again, Mr. Pullman. Uh, so, last year this time, uh, I presented you with three different scenarios. I think the board is accustomed to, to taking a look at different scenarios, right? What if, uh, in this case, that little boxed area to the upper right, that's showing just a projection of revenues as if they increase two and a half percent across the, the next five years? And what if, uh, the, our budget increases, our projected expenses goes up by three point two five percent? Now, I'm trying to be conservative here, and there's not a lot of difference in the, in the three different scenarios. I just wanna point out a few, a few different trends in this, and it's rather conservative. And ideally, you know, you want your revenues to come in exactly where your expenses are, right? We, we're always interested in maintaining our four percent fund balance. That's the very bottom line. That's our, uh, unappropriated, unreserved fund balance amount. That's not our total reserves, just unrestricted fund balance. That's, we're legally limited to retaining just four percent of our assuming here's budget. So, uh, the goal is to show a plan, a five-year plan, where we sustain financial stability. But, um, to be realistic, we know that, um, projecting actual expenditures out into the future, we've been looking at between four, five, and now it's a little like six percent from one year to the next. While our revenues, due to the tax levy limit and, and restricted to the amount of state aid that we get, there's not much other revenues, by the way. The other revenues come out to like between three and five percent. So, what we have to do is hold our budget down to this level, right? As I said before, our, our budget is restricted by the amount of revenues that we can actually bring in, right? But we also use our reserves, um, to help manage our budget from one year to the next. So in this particular scenario, this first one, we'll not concentrate more on this slide. We can take a, a quick look at the next two scenarios, but what you see is the same general trends, just this side. All right, we'll stick with this slide. So, given, um, given revenues increasing at two and a half percent and expenditures at three and a quarter percent, what I would like the board to take a look at is that first, right in the middle, the operating surplus row going across the years. And what you see here under this scenario is a trend where our operating surplus gets smaller and smaller and smaller, right? That makes sense when, uh, when our revenues are less than our expenditures, and it continues that same pattern from year to year. So what do we have to do, um, to, to maintain our fund balance? Well, it, there's two things. We try to project some replenishment into our reserves, and we, but we also are using reserves to help balance our budget. So funding from reserves is that blue line. And in this scenario, we're just keeping it the same. The next slide, just see how funding from reserves or, put in other words, our reliance on reserves to balance our budget does increase. So there's two things, the funding from reserves and, uh, in that red line going across, that's our projected transfer to reserves. So we were able to, when we closed out last year, um, commit quite a bit more to our reserves. We had three point five million basically. We lost three million dollars, we lose three million dollars of our capital reserve, our building reserve fund. That went to, that whole three million dollars went to support our new capital project. So it took it down to zero, but we were able to put that money, uh, as we closed out last year, to point two five million into the reserve. So, um, kind of interesting, just to reinforce the, the idea that, that it's a balancing act from one year to the next. We use some reserves to help balance the budget. Yep, we depend on, uh, replenishing those same reserves and also, um, invest in our facilities and then, in our buses from, from year to year. So the trend here, operating surplus goes down, our projected transfer to reserves also goes down, because our funding from the reserves to help balance our budget is staying the same. You see a quite, quite a quick reduction in our ability to replenish those, those reserves as that, the red numbers as we go across. We start next year, projected at one point five, then we're down to one point three, down to one million, and so, and so forth. So what we're looking at here is just a trend. One thing that we, uh, just point out on the bottom of the screen, because I always say, I don't have a crystal ball, but, uh, this is my qualifier. This is a plan, right, to show some sustainability. So we make a lot of assumptions about what future budgets are going to be. You know, no inflation's going to be, you know, two years out, five years out. So, this is one scenario. It may not be, end up being accurate, but it gets updated every year. The other thing I'll point out, it starts out with the year twenty-one, twenty-two. That's the year that we just closed out, so the beginning. So the ending fund balance for, for that year is one point two seven eight. That's our actual fund balance. And you have your audit report tonight that you'll be approving. That's, that's the unrestricted fund balance number that's contained in your audit report. It's very rarely spelled out in the executive summary that we shared with the board and the audit committee uh, when we reviewed that audit, that audit report with our auditors. So, um, that number one point two comes back up to the top in the next column, and that's our beginning point for, for this year, right? So we're gonna project, uh, the thirty-two million in revenue, thirty-one in expenses, and so forth. So, and then those, uh, revenue and expense, um, factors just play into the following year's bu, budgets. Any questions? So I'm just gonna flip to the next scenario, and we go from one point two five to one point, one point, I'm sorry, two point five percent increase in revenues to two point two five. Just a quarter reduction in the revenues and a quarter increase in, in expenses. And it really makes a big difference, just a little bit. So you can tweak this scenario all you want, and then you s, you still have to look at the same trends, operating surplus. Look at that operating surplus as we get out to the year twenty-five, twenty-six. Just with this tweaking, it takes us into a, a deficit, operating, operating, and that deficit for that year of three, two hundred and thirty-five. And then the following year, the operating deficit's all the way up to seven hundred and sixty-two. And our ability to transfer surplus funds goes, go right down to, to zero at the end of those five years. Our funding from reserves, our reliance on reserves, in this case, I'm showing those going up every year. That, this scenario is still showing ending fund balance at about four percent, but to the detriment of losing reserves along the way. So we would need to make some corrections. This just shows the gap between revenues and expenses at two percent. And you can see here where that's really not a sustainable prediction or, or projection. So, um, the lesson is, you really have to curtail the budget from year to the next. So for instance, uh, this year, we're, we're looking at a rollover budget at between five and six percent, that area. But we know we have to, have a lot of work to do to get that budget-to-budget increase down to roughly, you know, three percent, give or take a percent probably. Okay? So this is five years financial plan, that's in your packet, or that's on the agenda for approval tonight. Um, it's included here as part of this presentation. Just wanted to point that out, that is, uh, part of the report we're approving for tonight. And I, I did wanna remind the board of, uh, Mr. Pullman, I already mentioned that, that, you saw that big slide on the reserves. You did get a reserve report, a much more detailed report in June, and I'll have that ready for the board also next year.
Any questions?
Yes.
The one we're approving is the first slide. The five-year, so, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the board's approved all three scenarios.
We're, we're just trying to inform people. So here's the best case, here's the worst case, and we're just trying to give you a projection of these three scenarios, what it could look like. So we've done that the last few years, so that people know when we come into our budgeting process that we're really keeping a lens on efficiencies and capitalizing on what our allocation costs, that we're not wasteful because we know, I don't think at this time last year, any of us would have projected that inflation would be up at eight percent. You know, and that's, that's really coming down to whether we're fiscally solvent or not as we project out. So it's just scenarios, you're just getting a look at, and you buy your projection, and you're approving that, but this is an actual dollar-to-dollar, yeah. And as Gary said, you know, when CPI was up around eight percent, you know, that's when that tax levy limit comes into play, and it goes back to us saying, hey, you know, we've gotta go back to the tax cap, which is two percent, which he mentioned is the equivalent of about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase budget-to-budget. So, that really is going to create some, and so sharpening for our administrative team, because again, we didn't mention fuel costs, we didn't mention utilities. All those things are, are variables that are out of our control, but we have to have them flow with them. And we also know that we can't sustain the practice of dipping into our reserves for our districts overall, which is not sensible. It'd be like going to your savings account to go purchase something for the holidays, continue to spend down, continue to spend down to the point where you have nothing in reserves, and your pay hasn't increased, therefore, you know, pretty soon you're really gonna be over a barrel financially. And we just wanna give you and the community assurance that we're looking at all these scenarios, and then we'll have multiple budget factors, relative to budget season, and we'll present to you each time with the latest and greatest information we have available. And unfortunately, in some areas, we maybe, you know, and I, I don't wanna stand in front of you and say, hey, this is all good, but your rose-colored West is not, because it's not. I mean, we're in a position right now where with the inflation being as high as it is and the uncertainty of the, you know, um, the diesel fuel, gasoline, and, you know, your utilities as a whole, that alone, in addition to contractual obligation, is really going to force us to be very dialed in as we go through the season. So, that, that's, that's really the purpose of the three scenarios that I'm making. Yes?
I just wanted to make it common, I know that in the past, and I'm pretty sure it's up again this year, there has been a push and an interest in raising that percentage that each district can have at the end of the year, but there are limitations given in some ways.
Yes.
I know there was a push last year to go at least to six, and may, and may go higher. I don't legislate or committee for that, because, not in anticipation, but just because a lot of rural districts are struggling.
Yeah, and I, we're, we're obviously in tune with that component as well, but we, we know that, you know, obviously, with just completing midterm polls, we're not holding out hope that anything's gonna dramatically change because there has been a significant shift in power. Um, but we will continue to lobby, we will continue to advocate. I know Gary, myself, and Fred, got a chance to meet with Claudia Penny briefly on Tuesday, just to share, you know, some perspective with her to, to let her know how appreciative we were that she was in Woolkit, and how appreciative we were to see so many of our elected officials coming into our community. Um, but just recognizing that the challenges we're faced with on the east end of the county are greatly different than the challenges on the west end of the county or even in the central part of our county. Um, and my feeling was that she was very tuned into that and is very concerned with her, um, her district, um, because she's covering most of the lake shore from Clayton down to here um, in Alwas, with the exception of Monroe County, and I believe part of Oregon's coming, I don't know her district off the top of my head, but I would say that she's, she shows promise in coming back out and said, don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything she or anyone from her office can do. So that was a good sign. So, lastly, I just wanna say, um, for my update, just to close it out, you know, congratulations to Alston and I, Evernandez. Um, last weekend, he finished fourth in the section five championship, so he's a recipient of the section five patch. He will represent North Rose Woolkit. And if you look at that progress, so, uh, two weeks ago, he finished seventh in the Wayne Figueroa's League Championship, and then last weekend, finished fourth, so- So if my math is correct, hopefully next weekend, or Saturday, he'll come in second at least. So, you know, there's no pressure there, Austin. But we do want to wish him well and say we're very proud of him. We're very proud of all of our students. But this is quite an honor. And I know that Coach was pretty excited, you know, to have a cross-country representative at the state meeting. So are there any questions for me? You know, we've stuck a lot into a short amount of time, but we wanted to give you the budget calendar, give you the five-year projected outlook, and then stuff my superintendent's report in there as well. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. Several years ago, I attended a conference with Dr. Timms, the several school TECs attorneys. And it always meant they were pushing that schools should take advantage of a full 2% and always go to that 2% limit that they're allowed because of this very thing that you've got to have, you've got to have fund balance at the end of the year to carry over, to put in those reserves, to get you out of a bind farther on down the line. And they were also understanding that taxpayers think, oh, 2%, my taxes are going to go up 2%. That's not necessarily the way it works because of an increase in the tax base that is usual for most times. And particularly if they're keeping up 200% eval. So, you know, something for the board to always consider, getting, doing as much as you can today to ensure your future.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that our team's been very focused on is, you know, trying to keep that mindset on preventative maintenance, stretch our taxpayer dollars. And we're certainly not living frivolously with the taxpayers' money. But I do believe you're right. You know, we are trying to do as much as we can to stretch our dollars. So we'll keep that in mind. And we'll always present a plan that we think is fiscally responsible for our community because we just understand that economic times are going to hit us in multiple ways. So the last thing I'd like to say is thank you to our veterans for our community. Thank you, Mr. Statsky. I know you were involved presenting today. And I know you were at several of the assemblies. I think our administration did a great job honoring our local veterans. And just want to make sure everybody enjoys that tomorrow. And the last one I'll give is to the Adams family. Although they didn't take me up on my offer to be a professor, they are having their first presentation tonight, second show on Saturday, and last one is on Sunday. So seven, seven, and two o'clock. Thank you.
I think it's important to put out that though these are hard, sometimes uncomfortable conversations that we have to have about fiscal status of the district, our administrative team has been on top of us for years. We've discussed this. Since you came on board and your team has led this district, we have been laser-focused on the maintenance of the buildings, our fiscal responsibility to our community, and the uncertainty that was ahead of us. And I've never felt more comfortable in this district knowing that we have a team and we have uncovered opportunities and savings for our taxpayers. I think COVID is a perfect example of what our administrative team can do. We excel in others, when other districts didn't, in providing our students with the best possible education in a time when we've never dealt with before. So I really have confidence that we're going to do the same here. And I appreciate everything that everyone does every day to save our community money and still give our students the best possible education. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, now. We will move on to reports and correspondence.
I knew you wanted that drop.
Yeah, I'd really like more light.
I was trying to get something for that.
Just close out the presentation.
I was just grabbing.
I did.
Your shot, by that way.
Yeah. There, that's what I like. We're in the dark down here.
Are you pleasant with that? That way, if they're saying the last.
Thank you. I told her to see it. We'll move on to the building. Linda Hegner, do you have anything to report from the honorary school?
I have a request. It's all good. I'm going to be happy to, I'm not a chronological or pro reason, but parent conferences were very successful with a lot of parents showing up. This year, some of the teachers made videos of students where students said what they liked, what they did not like as much because parents were coming to conferences and they didn't have a feeling or understanding what their kids are thinking. So that was really very helpful. And I'm sure they appreciated seeing it. And then next, the thing that's up there that covers Veterans Day, that was a wonderful program this morning. It was really interesting to hear the little ones reading poems or talking about the history of how Veterans Day has come to be Veterans Day and so on. But they also, you know, when all the kids stood up and were singing songs, and the one that I liked the most was the one when the younger ones were marching while they were singing. It was really quite cute. One of the things that I have been very impressed with at North Rose Elementary, and I'm sure goes on in every building, is how much effort is put into communicating with families and parents and connecting with them in ways where they're able to say, this is the way it works best for me, and that's how it goes forward. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is family literacy night, which happened quite a bit of time ago. But there were many things were going on. There was a Scholastic book sale. There was a winter poetry distribution to youngsters, which was, some kids were wearing them because they loved it so much. And a volunteer from, literacy volunteers, Derek Poole, read stories and yawned hoarse to the kids. And he was very dramatic, even with sound effects. But prior to going into that, I had an experience that really touched me and a lot of things that I wanted to share too. I saw three women and a young little girl waiting to go in to be read to. And immediately, I realized they were not speaking English. And so they were, and the young student was very animated and enjoying the conversation. And I discovered afterwards that she has just newly arrived at North Rose Elementary, and that she's from Ukraine. And when Christie was telling about this new student, one of the teachers raised her hand and said, I speak Ukrainian. And later, I discovered that not only does she speak Ukrainian, and she's helping this young lady, but she's helping, she's, she also speaks the specific dialect that this family has. Now, the reason that she ended up here is that her aunt moved here three years ago. And so because of that family connection, she ended up here. But when you think about what happened in terms of that teacher, that's real on code that I'm reading. So that made my day. And that's staying here really good. Paul, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Yes. And Mr. Up, I'm sorry, Mr. Hassel, that the rest of your team left because I really wanted them to, about here. I was, so now that I got my air line, I was signing a little bit more mobile. And I went over to the middle school on Wednesday morning to greet the students and staff. It was kind of like leadership by walking around. I occurred that term. You can kind of get a feel for what's going on just by the way people walk in the door. And I was absolutely thrilled at how many students had their heads up. They were chatting with each other. They were talking to each other. They were wishing each other good day and said good morning. Shocked. Because at the high school, a lot of kids coming with their heads down. And I was just thrilled. And the staff, everybody that came in was just like, ah, good morning. Hello. Really enlightening for itself. Please pass it on to your staff. It was great. This morning, at the middle school, again, practice for the veterans. And so I showed up because you never miss a free breakfast. And there were at least 35 veterans at this point. I've never seen that many veterans at any school in our district since I became involved. So what a great showing again for the middle school. And something that I've noticed in our agenda is that there are two boys' modified basketball teams at the middle school. So well done. And then quickly, if I may, some of this is either news or middle schooling. I was attacked on Leeborough Island the other day by one of my fellow people that live there and said, well, you're on the Board of Education? And I went, yeah. I said, well, I got to tell you, what's going on at that middle school is fantastic. That new principal you've got is really doing a great job. So what a nice comment from one of the folks just walking down the street. So well done.
Thank you, Paul. And Tina, do you have anything from the high school?
Yes. High school's been busy. I'm a member of 753 seniors participating in service project in the York Settlement Cemetery. That was on Facebook. You can see where they were working hard, like they were having a great time, doing a great job. So it was a nice thing to see. As several of those mentioned, it was part of mine as well, a lot of it again. The musical, The Adams Family, opens tonight, and then Saturday and Sunday as well. The Veterans Don't Leave, and everybody's commented on that. The high school's pretty active in that as well. Monday, November 14th, we'll have our National Honor Society infection with 11 new members. We're really building that up, and that's a good. First market period ends. And high school also sponsored a family net to help with the final for financial aid for our graduating seniors and degree college. I know that's always been something that's been really lost for a few years. Having that come back is pretty hopeful. That's a horrible thing. And having the support help really makes a big difference. So that's all to stop. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Tina.
Sure.
So you're good to go?
Yes, please. Thank you for being here and drive home safely and have a good evening.
Thank you.
The woman in our fourth county, Linda, sir. Thank you, Mr. William, for his fourth county.
Thanks.
Well, the fourth county, I believe, is going to be meeting again this Saturday. Last month, there were concerns about the food program that we're trying to get statewide that has been in place for our system launch. And because of the feedback, we don't take this survey. I haven't everyone replied to this survey, but those that did really wanted an additional, well, maybe an additional polishing and position papers to include general security, technology issues in cybersecurity, and those are also key things across the board, which we didn't deal with specifically, but more generally. So there are changes to some of the decisions, especially the state. So that's where we're moving.
Okay. Handbook, if there's something to report there. Audit, John, do you have anything for the audit committee?
In the consent agenda, there's the management letter and the notes from the audit. There were not any deficiencies found in internal controls or operations. It just had suggestions to make probably the district more efficient in some areas. So we had a really good audit. But that's in the consent agenda. And then 90 days after we improve it, the corrective plan comes up, which we're looking at.
Thank you. Jason, Buildings and Grounds, capital project.
Energy.
Ed?
We have added a meeting for the Buildings and Grounds Committee since the September 20th meeting, in which we identified some areas of concern. But we will be discussing long-term goals for the facilities across the district at our next meeting. So I imagine we'll have more to report after that.
Good, thank you. And Paul, you have some first reads and also second reads going in. Who did I miss?
District Safety.
Oh, all right. Can we?
Yeah.
But, oh, you, Paul?
Sure. Yeah, sure. Just very briefly, on that 1610 district meeting, really the only thing we did is we added the part about absentee balance. You remember that we completely deleted an absentee balance policy. But I said, we're not deleting absentee balance. We were just deleting the policies. So we added any of this policy, assuming change on that one. Then when you get down to contingency budget, where we recommended deletion, that's because it's already in the revised budget adoption program. So there's just no reason to keep it. And then on the final one, too, the smoking and tobacco, that's a revised policy, but really it's just adding. It wasn't a significant revision. Of course, anytime you have any questions, reach contact.
We do have a second read in the, in the, in the consent agenda. No, that's not this. All right, that's set. We'll deal with that when we get there. Okay. So this is the first read. They were in your packet. So take time to look through them so if you have questions at the next meeting, you can answer those. And then we'll go back to the one I skipped. My apology, District Safety Committee, Jason.
Yeah, I wanted to say something about District Safety Committee because this is the first year I was on it, and I really didn't know what to expect. And I've been overly infocused about the large group of people. It's almost like a big tank with a process, you know, plan that's already in place. Everyone's involved. Everyone discusses different scenarios that they've been in and ideas that they have. So the safety of our students, to me, isn't even a question anymore with the number of people that we have involved in our district safety plan. At the last meeting, we discussed primarily the tap-up rollout, which has gone well, from what I understand. There've been a couple hurdles, but that's expected with any large-scale rollout of a new technology. And facility upgrades regarding locks on doors and things like that that we're looking into and need to be done. But to report that, the district is definitely headed in the right direction and has a solid plan, of course.
Great, that's good to hear. And I'm sure every parent, every parent in the district, played into that as well. Public access, Tina, is there anyone asking to speak today?
No, Kelly didn't want to sneak tonight.
Pardon me?
No, there's no one.
All right, we come now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda goes from the top of page two through the top of page six. Motion, please, to accept, to approve the consent agenda. Shall we, and Paul? Discussion. Questions? Hearing done. I'm in favor of approving the consent agenda. Motion is carried. Turn now to page six, number six, policies. This is the second read on these. A motion, please, to approve the policies that are presented for a second read. Linda and Jason? Linda and Jason? Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor? Motion carried. Number seven. Number one, the appointment of an instructional coach and appointment of teacher and special assignment. Motion, please, to approve. John and Linda? Discussion. This is a roll call vote. Tina, would you call the roll, please?
Cindy.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Shelley.
Stay.
Linda.
Yes.
Tina.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you. And now, number two, number six, number, number seven, number two. The co-curricular appointments. A motion, please, to approve. Paul and Shelley? Discussion. Hearing done. Tina, would you call the roll?
Cindy.
Yes.
Jason.
I'm staying.
John.
Yes.
Shelley.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Tina.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you. Motion carried. Under, we come now to the board member requests, comments, and discussion time. Tonight, we were going to need to finish up our goals. You will recall that at one workshop, we did work on these. And we had two that we needed to to still work on. And I thank Tina and Shelley for taking their responsibility and delving into the social and emotional goals for us. They have come with this recommendation, and I'd like to do social first. They're recommending that we will support interaction that demonstrates mutual respect and appreciation for all community members. And support interaction that demonstrates, it should be financial, mutual respect and appreciation for individual members of the board. The first one part of that is our goal for District One. And the second part of that is for ourselves and our own operational system. Shelley and Tina, do you want to say anything about these? Before we talk, we need to talk next about how, if we, if we as a board want to accept these, then we would need to talk about how we would measure them. I'm sure Tina and Shelley are hoping to us making changes or talking about it. But at least we have our people in the technologies type department working on this stuff.
I guess I'm open for questions, if I have any suggestions for you.
Those of you, Jason?
I just thought they fit perfectly for the task we had, so I appreciate the fact that you guys came up with them. I don't have any critiques or organization to add to it. Order of mine, they, we just have a goal we have to mind.
Eric, do you have a opinion?
John, how do you feel? Good?
Paul?
All right. Everyone seems to be getting it. So great. Do you have any thoughts, Tina and Shelley, or anyone else, on how we would measure this? Starting with the first half, which is we would, the district part, we would support interaction that demonstrates mutual respect and appreciation for all community members. I assume by community you mean school, community, or just school and the whole community? Which, I don't know.
All. Because the other ones did work.
Right, right.
Do you want to clarify with your dad? School?
Yeah, I think maybe they would clarify it if anyone was reading it.
For all community members.
For all school and community?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Did you have any thoughts on how we would measure that? Did you get your mic back, Tina?
Okay. So what we were thinking is, we would just add through active listening, face-to-face meetings, and the acknowledgement of all communications.
Say that again.
Through active listening, face-to-face meetings, and the acknowledgement of all communications. That would be important, first time. That cover up?
The first thing I thought when I read that was that Parents Square and the interaction of family members, when we distribute information. I think that's something that is going to be easily engaged by the newsletter that our middle school staff talked about. And Parents Square, those types of things that we're implementing that weren't there before. So that's why I was real quick when you came up with another social, because it is.
Good. Would you, would you repeat that again, Tina?
Sure.
I need to think about it.
Active listening, face-to-face meetings, and the acknowledgement of all communications.
Okay. Do you like it? John, Linda? Oh, sure. What do you think about this?
Well, I'm struggling with, kind of a bad way, but with partnerships and how we give, we want to be a community and supporting them. So, I don't know how else you can, what else you can add to it from what Tina's said, but it's part of that, too. It's part of attending community events. It's part of going to the barbershop. It's part of being at Foster, things like that. So, I don't know if you want to add any more. You get too worried, it becomes ridiculous. But those are kind of the thoughts that I've got. It's more than just like Parents Square, which is a wonderful thing.
Okay. Say yours again, now, Tina.
Active listening, face-to-face meetings, and the acknowledgement of all communications.
Would face-to-face meetings cover, Paul, what you're thinking about there?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're inseparable. I mean, the two just blend together, partnerships and social emotion, as far as not respecting the person when you're talking about community members.
Well, then, on the line, in the parentheses under the first one, we're going to break through. And Tina, one last time. This time, we're going to break down.
Active listening, face-to-face meetings, and acknowledgement of all communications. Can we just start with, do you? Actually, there you go. You can take that. That's what the back and forth was, Shelley.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
So, Cindy, on the first call, we will seek connection to the NWR community. So maybe that's, what community are we referring to there? Is that the school or is that?
We add, Paul, with mutual respect and appreciation for all school and community members.
Right. I was begging the person for partnerships. Excuse me.
You're a part of partnerships?
Yeah, you know, the NWR community. My question was, is that just the school community? Or was that Rose Buffer?
I don't know.
Okay, well, we don't want to get hung up on that, but.
Yeah, let's hang up, hang on to this social right now. Okay. Are we okay then with that as a way of measuring for the first part of social? Okay, good. Now, the second part, the support interaction that demonstrates mutual respect and appreciation for individual members of the school board. And Tina, what was your measurement there?
Through direct communication and active engagement.
Through direct communication and active engagement. Measurable?
Yes.
John? What do you think?
I need to, can I have more detail?
Pardon?
I'm a little bit lost on that. I don't understand it fully. Show me an example. Give me an example.
That would be the active engagement and communication. That's really what we're looking for with that, because we've got the mutual respect. Measure for measuring that through how we interact with each other.
Could we add with each other? Would that clarify a little more for you, John?
Yeah, but, in other words, this is going to have to be at meetings or workshops, because communication as an email is not advisable.
Right. We don't do business via email, but we do communicate with email.
Right, we do.
Yeah, I don't think you can eliminate email. I mean, I understand we don't make decisions on email, but we certainly communicate. And the way that we communicate with each other would demonstrate respect or backup.
There's some sort of information.
There was something that I didn't know how to write, and I didn't know how to make it short enough, so it wasn't too wordy. But I think it needs to lean a little more than what we're saying, because mutual respect is important. I think we need to, it needs to be through some sort of willingness to consider differing opinions, or openness, or something to that matter, because we're not always going to agree on everything. But I think every spike comes with the ability to consider someone else's opinion.
Yeah, the active engagement kind of captures it, but I know it's me. And it isn't, I don't know how else to say it.
Would you like to change the word "active" to, well, be respectful and cool?
Didn't we cover that directly?
Covered under what?
That's not the definition of a social call log. We, that's covered under "actively."
What dignity and sensibility would be?
Yeah. We were trying to keep it simple so that it didn't, you know, we kept them all separate.
The mutual respect is involved. The measure is how that we do have direct communication and the difference in communication. That's different. I think maybe for the measurement part, that is okay. Direct communication and active engagement.
I think those are great words, but I don't know how you use them to measure something. It is something you could put a number on or even, I mean, Jordan, you ran.
Actually, I'm thinking about when we do the evaluation process for results. We're giving examples, and I think that's what we would do this last time. Communication is a tough thing. I want you to, you know, what I'm saying. You know, if you want to have something, I'm pretty, it's not. And I think what we do with that will be discuss the resources.
Remember, what we're measuring is mutual respect and appreciation, the supportive interaction that we have. It's not coming together in your, I think we're confusing all of this.
Yeah.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about social interaction only. And we've got to keep that in mind. It's got to stay at that minimum. Because if we make it bigger, then we're approaching all the other things. And that's what we're doing. So we just have to, it's hard to keep those straight.
Maybe, maybe it's a mistake trying to pull them apart, but we did, so we're hopeful. Yeah, I, you know, I think direct communication, we're communicating directly with each other. And we do engage each other in conversation, and we do it directly. We don't go around the bar and.
Wouldn't it help to add through communication? Would that make it clearer, it takes an active engagement?
I'm just trying to think about it. I can be off base, but it's more than support interaction. It's support interaction that demonstrates mutual respect. And I think the mutual respect portion of that is what's, what the key is. And I think if you're going to gauge that, you need to be able to gauge the effectiveness of mutual respect and how we treat each other. That's a very good question, Cindy.
I don't think we have the same definition of mutual respect as part of the problem. I'm wondering if that's what we're following.
I think the definition of mutual respect is the conversation that we're having right now.
It's being able to interact back to.
Positive.
Doesn't have to be positive.
It doesn't. If you're going to support, if you're going to demonstrate mutual respect, I mean, I mean, it's positive without being colliding or without taking.
I'm not, I'm not going to there. No, I don't mean that. What I'm saying is it doesn't necessarily have to be a positive. If you have bringing negative gas back.
Oh, certainly, but you can't drink somebody else's port. And on your social, that's the way I take it. And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I've read you wrong.
There's no wrong with writing.
Oh, first.
She's much respectier.
She does.
It's going over the bars. It's a fact.
What if we, for example, Cindy?
Yes.
What if we added the word solicit, active engagement? Would that, would that help?
Solicit?
Why does it?
What are you trying to get at?
Encouraging, encouraging active engagement. In other words, let's everyone get their opinion out. We don't want anyone to sit on their hands and feel like they are afraid of some reason. Yeah, we don't want to have a chilling effect on any board members, is what I'm trying to say.
But I don't think we need to encourage it. It's either present or not present. I was a member of a school board many years ago that had no respect for each other. And it was very odd.
Well, when I think of social, you know, I think of parties. I'm getting me party.
That's a good point.
Oh, social. Oh, getting there to actually. If there's some hot word we could add for engagement, take in. If there's some hot word we could add for engagement, take in the respect that, that we're being respectful of each other, or encouraging each other, or caring about each Tina, you're a word for some years.
I, this is getting really annoying for me, and I don't even know what we're doing anymore, I want to be honest. Because what we're supposed to be measuring is the interaction that we have, not the amount of respect we have for each other. So we've got to be careful about that. So we will support interaction that demonstrates mutual respect and appreciation for community members, as well as, I think we've got our individual board members, right? Isn't that what we're measuring?
The interaction.
Yes, that's what we're supposed to be measuring, not the mutual respect. We're getting interaction through mutual respect.
Perhaps the mutual respect and appreciation should be in the measurement part, not in the goal, if you were looking for interaction.
Yeah, we, by saying we'll support interaction.
Support interaction that demonstrates direct communication and active engagement, and then we roll the mutual respect and appreciation down into the measurement.
Except to the measurement, respect, really, would. What if we, what if we instead say we'll support interaction among community members?
No, we're not there, we're down in the, individual members of the board.
Well, okay.
This is normally what we do in a workshop.
Yeah, I know.
But we're trying to give support interaction.
And I'm on four levels.
Support interaction and demonstrating.
Support interaction for individual members of the board, using mutual respect and appreciation of what we know.
Say that again, Tina.
We go, we support interaction for individual members of the board, demonstrating mutual respect, appreciation, direct communication, and active engagement.
I like that.
How's that? Better?
I support you 100%.
You mean from the part of the.
You're so respectful, Jason. It's wonderful.
Okay, how's that, Shelley?
All right, if you got it written down?
No, I just said.
All right. Support interaction for, I don't know. Well, you're right. We're not too emotional. We respect the action that provides for the emotional well-being, well-being of all. And how do you measure that? And the, for the community district part, it says, through active listening and the use of repeating, ericating, and reflecting to engage in cooperative interactions. I can tell an educator will do it. I think, I really don't want to spend any more time on this tonight. Let's continue to think about that, maybe we'll want to, we'll talk in our workshop for a few minutes about maybe putting the social and emotional back together. Maybe those two separating was just not a hard thing to do. Because it's not separated in our strategic board.
Oh, it's not separated.
Yeah. All right, we'll table this for the time being. Back to the agenda. The other thing I just wanted under this part to remind you of, you've already been reminded of Saturday is Sun Use the High School Musical, Monday is the National Honor Society induction, Tuesday is for family board meeting with our superintendent as our representation. And Wednesday is our workshop. And we were planning to share the disparate information and the discussed future capital projects that Jason will lead us in. So we've got a full week here of board business to do, if you can make it. Can we move on to good news?
Why is everyone looking at me? Yeah, I've got more good news, and I was just thinking, didn't we one time have the good news before the administrative block? Because, I mean, the good news, I feel like should be shared with everyone.
Well.
Anyway, great, I mean, I'll press time, but I'd like to give this to Paul, maybe for the future.
All right. Just, can you give us just some highlights?
Yes, yeah, every, every team that we had, every fall team, had some community service activity, and I think that's pretty, pretty remarkable. And also, you know, the girls soccer made it to the second, oh, second round, boys made it to the semifinal round, girls events to the section, girls volleyball was to the section round, and of course, we just, the boys volleyball also, well, they hosted the first round, and then they crushed country, we just, we don't know how, how well that worked out. One more quick and personal note, a kid that I'm very familiar with who graduated from Northfield School discarded his second player of the month award for the Northeast Cratchit New England Conference West Division, that Mike Steski was a player of the week again for the, for his play in C N. So I think that's cool, and any of our former students can analyze.
Yeah, that's right. And this time, it takes us through our agenda. And at this point, I will be breaking into executive session. So I'll need a motion to go to executive session where we're to discuss the claim history of specific employee. Motion, please, Tina, amen, Jason. Discussion, all in favor? And for all of you, we will not, we'll be coming down into a general session to adjourn, but we will not be doing any business, so thank you.